All right, we call the orders meeting out of the independent school district. Do you remember if you can turn your microphone on? Tammy, would you leave the education?
Good morning, Father. We just thank you for this day, Lord, and we just ask that you be with us tonight as we go about doing what's best for our community and our district, Lord, and other students here in our district. And Lord, I just ask that you continue to watch over our campus with all our staff and faculty and students, Lord, as we continue through COVID and other sicknesses and illnesses, Lord. We just ask that you give our community and other school districts throughout our nation. And Lord, just be with us, ladies, and guide us and direct us, and forgive us one failure in these things asked in your name.
All right, we're in the public hearing session, section of our meeting tonight. This is to consider a reinvestment zone for the 313 agreement for Grimes County Solar. In order for them to be eligible to meet the 313 agreement or the 313 rules and regulations, they have to designate a reinvestment zone, just like we did with Blue Jay. Due to time constraints, they're asking that the district designate the reinvestment zone, which, as you have it in your packet, I don't know if y'all have it out there or not. One of the things last time that made it a little difficult is it wasn't done by complete tax ID tracks. It looks like this, what we've proposed here is, is by the tax ID tracks and the Grimes County Central Appraisal District has confirmed that all of those tracks that are listed here are under agreement with Grimes County Solar, so they do qualify for the reinvestment It shouldn't affect any adjoining landowners other than, I mean, they're not being included in the reinvestment zone if they're not under lease, I guess is what I'm trying to say. So with that, we'll open it up for public comment. I don't know if you are here for that or if you are here for the next session, but we'll leave it open maybe five minutes, just in case somebody shows up. Kind of leave it open five minutes in case anybody shows up late for a comment. If not, at that time, we'll entertain a motion.
Which one has to be red?
This one has to be specific.
And which, give me the age, would you put higher?
Okay, so.
I have it right here at the name.
It's right after the.
Does it say public one, item number two?
Item number three, actually. We'll actually come out of the public hearing and then we'll go into the open, I mean, no, it's fine. We'll come out of the public hearing and we'll call the regular session.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm missing four minutes.
Nobody wants to speak about solar.
I don't know that they're going to do whatever they're going to do and if it asks our tax rules, go for it, people's money. If they give me fiber optics, I'd be happy with that.
Oh, you are not on Mid-South, right? So you're not getting here in town.
Well, supposedly, we're going to have an option. Mid-South runs to the back of my property, but I would have had to have paid three to four thousand from running a line to get electricity. And, you know, at that time, it was Gulf State.
Where's that at?
Right here at the county barn.
Oh, crap.
But behind me, they wouldn't, like I said, that it would have cost a fortune. Well, now, I wish I'd done it, but I just want the internet. I'm tired of Windstream.
They say it's really nice, everybody I've heard.
Everybody, every time.
We got it finally, and it's really nice.
You got it?
It's fast.
And supposedly, it's good.
Faster. Windstream, we had it, and U-Rock.
I would call them, I'm paying for this. Well, yes, ma'am, but if you'll read the fine print, I'm sorry, that's all we can offer. They go up and down, it says they stay down when they work.
Right.
So I'm praying that Mid-South is talking about others being eligible.
Okay.
Does the school have option for Mid-South?
Not yet.
It's in the town, it's inside city limits, so we're.
Well, you're intergy also.
Yes, sir.
But maybe.
My mother's going to get it, though. She's going to be like one of the very last ones to get it.
The last, okay. Supposedly, they are because of their funding and the fiber optics and the rural laws that the government's passing, it might get off her tail, which will Windstream out of business.
Just a slow five minutes while you wait.
Fiber optic discussions.
So, Ms. Whitten, are you on Mid-South?
I am. I'm still on Windstream at the time.
Has it made it, has it made it a change yet, though?
I don't even know.
Has it?
Yeah, it's gotten worse. We're not even available for Windstream.
I know we are.
Stop track.
Really? Well, you ain't missing nothing.
A lot of frustration, because that's what it is.
And I need to check your sound, I need to.
Not about the solar or anything, but has anybody heard an update on Will, though?
I haven't heard anything in a couple of days.
I know they were still reducing, and I was just.
He's, he's, he's off sedation, he's off ventilator.
Off IV drip.
IV drip.
Only thing, he's only got a trach and they're controlling his blood pressure with.
That's medication, okay.
And he's responding to, like, if they pinch his leg or arms.
So he's still got pain response to pain, yeah.
Response.
And that's good, he's got to get out through all the sedation, all that he's.
Said he opens his eyes, but he's just not following commands.
But he's responding, so.
But, you know.
Then it takes time.
Anyway, they're, they're, they, they need to, and Logan had toured a couple of facilities, rehab facilities recommended by the doctors.
What do you know, I know Kier Herman is one of the best. He's going to a different place before Kier.
Yeah, the Ford, yes. Maybe that's right, anyway. And so maybe God willing, by the end of the week, he'll be able to do that.
One of my, our teachers, it was a veteran from Iraq and Afghanistan, they saved his life and he's able to, you know, function again.
Their prayer request is for him to.
Yeah.
Okay, I don't think anybody is coming, so we'll entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing session for the Grimes County Solar reinvestment zone.
Certainly.
A second, those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries five O. We move to the regular, I call the order of the regular meeting, and did we have anybody sign up for public for, Ms. Joseph?
Ms. Whitten?
Nobody signed up.
Good and peaty.
Good and peaty, okay. Item number three, which is what we just considered a reinvestment zone for Grimes County Solar. Any discussion on that? If not, if there's no discussion, entertain a motion.
Certainly.
It's the one you have to read, have to dig that.
We appreciate your.
Yeah, thanks for raising your hand.
All right. Okay, the motion is free. Pursuant, pursuant to chapters 312 and 313 of Texas Tax Code, I move that the board approve and adopt the resolution as presented, designating the Grimes County Solar reinvestment zone established in the boundaries thereof provided for today, February 10, 2022, as the effective date of the resolution, and that the superintendent or his designated be authorized to take such further action as may be required to establish the Grimes County Solar reinvestment zone.
A second. Any further discussion of the reinvestment zone and the motion on the table? Those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries five O, and we move to item number, let me back to our call order here, four, consideration of the rule of District of Innovation Plan as proposed by the District Advisory Committee.
Okay, so I'm representing the committee tonight. It's going to be the same plan that we've had the last five years, and so if you'll look on the second page, the first one that we're looking at is that we can actually start before the fourth Monday of the month, and so we'd like to keep that. Then the next one is we'd be able to hire CTE teachers that are not necessarily certified teachers, but if they have the background and they pass the background check, they'd be allowed to teach, and then they have a mentor for five years, that kind of deal. So that's in there. That's the same, all this is the same as last time, I'm just going back over this. And then the third one would be that we propose that the teacher contract go from 187, and it can be reduced up to five days. And so that's, that's in the District of Innovation, and that's what we currently are operating under, the same guidelines and procedures right now, and so we would like to just redo that.
Do we still have to go through all the process, where we apply with?
I don't think so. I think we're okay.
It's just a.
Only if you change it do you have to reapply. So we'll change it.
So this would be the end of, would it be a public hearing or anything like that?
Yes, this would be, well, we still have to have a meeting later on, but we have to be able to adopt this first.
Okay.
I think, and the monitor said we can have a meeting in March.
Okay, so we do have some other steps to take.
Yes, okay.
Any of the motion that we've had, the District of Innovation Plan as proposed.
Okay, a motion to approve the District of Innovation Plan as proposed by the District Advisory Committee.
A second.
Read, second, so. Any discussion of the District of Innovation? Those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries five O, item number five, consideration of order calling for a bond election. I'll say this, as far as my part, and I've mentioned this to other board members, this isn't, I know some people have said that there's a lot of pressure on the board or board member to call this election. I don't think, the other thing, it's the easy thing to do because we're basically putting it back in the voter's hands, so all we're doing is saying, hey, there's additional tax base out here, do you or don't you want to take advantage of it? So to me, it's a very easy decision for us sitting here to pass the bond election. There's a little bit of money involved, but not a lot as far as the election process or the voting, but I think it's the right thing to do. I think it's the right thing to do to move forward with approving the bond election, but again, I think it's the easy thing for us to put it back into the voter's hands and let them decide if they want to take advantage of the additional tax base or not. So we entertain a motion, and then we'll open the discussion, if other board members want to comment on that or.
I'm going to, do I just read it as his?
No, no.
Wait, which one?
Right here.
Right here.
Oh, she don't fill the short.
That's why I get it, that's why I get it.
I don't care, let's move it back to that.
I'm going to get the board to approve the order calling, school board elect, school bond election.
A second.
Motion in a second, we'll open it for discussion with the board members. Okay, no discussion, those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries five O.
Now that we made that motion to do that, let's stay in this item, and Mr. Sidebottom needs to do some do's and don'ts aboard training.
And you're okay with doing that, see?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll see the power on the projector. Fired up. So how many of y'all have been part of a bond election in the past?
Two.
Okay, and y'all have none. All right, so.
Are you saying, I mean.
As a board member.
Okay.
All right, so as this thing fires up, I'll just kind of tell you what I'm doing here. First of all, I'm not an attorney. I usually say the corny, but I did say it at Holiday Inn Express. But essentially, now that you have.
Would you like the light out so you can see it?
It's up to them.
Sure, let's see what it looks like.
Well, that's better. Now you don't have to look at me. So essentially, now that you have called an election, there are ethics, rules, and laws in play, and we're just going to go over, all I'm trying to do this evening is to let you all know kind of why those laws exist and to help you not do something that you shouldn't do. And it's not really rocket science, this will take less than 30 minutes, unless you have questions, I'm here as long as y'all need me. But essentially, it's going to work, okay. So, this is weird. So this is about what the board can, the board administrators and staff can say and do now that you've taken action. Simple as that. So we're going to talk a little bit about critical dates, school board and staff do's and don'ts, the distribution of informational material, the political action committee formation, and filing requirements of a PAC, if we have one. All of this is because it is illegal, and this is, I got some questions in here to try to see if you all are following along, but it all boils down to one thing, it is absolutely illegal to use taxpayer dollars to advocate or lobby. So you cannot use a taxpayer dollar to advocate the passage of the bond that you just called. So it doesn't mean that you can't have opinions on that bond, just when, where, and how you can have the opinion, except for that man right there. He can now no longer have an opinion until May 8. So some important dates, last day to call the bond order is February 18. You all have obviously met that date. The next important date we have is April 7, and that is anyone who wants to have their voice heard within this district and wants to be able to vote, has to be registered to vote by that date, or they cannot take action on the bond. So our goal will be first and foremost to make sure that those folks know that and they get registered so they can vote their heart, whatever that may be. And then early voting will start April 25 and go to May 3, a little shorter than last year, and Election Day is May 7. There'll be a lot of work to do to inform the public between now and then of how you all came to this decision. This is just a lot of TBDs, but essentially, there's a lot of work to do, and if the bond is passed by the public, they're not going to see a building for quite some time. It takes a while to be designed, and then it takes a while to be built, especially in the market that we're in now with the long lead times of construction materials. So if the, if the bond does pass, you'll have an excited public, and they'll probably be calling and asking all of you, hey, why don't we see anything happening yet? And there'll be several months of design time by the architect to make sure it stays within budget, yet meets everything that your public wanted, and then it'll take probably a year, year and a half after that to build it. So it'll be a couple of year process. This is all a result, this training is all a result of Section 255.003 of the Election Code, and I don't like to read presentations, but this one I will. An officer or employee of a political subdivision, so you all, may not spend or authorize the spending of public funds for political advertising. This section does not apply to a communication that factually describes the purposes of a measure if the communication does not advocate passage or defeat of the measure. So what this says, the part right here, we need to inform everybody. It absolutely has to happen, but like I said before, we can't use taxpayer dollars to offer our opinion. There are lots of rules and regulations regarding this, some examples of things that a school district cannot say. Good schools are the foundation of a good community. Does anybody believe that statement's true? I know I do. So why can we legally not say it? Any volunteers?
Commercial.
Yes.
Saying we're bad if we don't pass this.
Bingo. It's insinuating that if you vote no on this bond, we will not have a good school in IISD, which we all know is absolutely incorrect. It's a wonderful school now and will be regardless of what the public decides. Same scenario, every child deserves a good education, it implies that if you vote no, they won't get one. Put children first implies that if you vote no, you're not putting children first or you're putting them last. It's not the case. Show you care about education, of course you care about education, you're on the board and you don't make any money for it, but you get the point. So it's, it's really tricky. I believe lawyers and Austin have made it very difficult for school districts to inform in an easy way, which is why we're having this training. So the key questions on when to advocate and when to not. Bottom line, if you are using or on any school property or at an event, it does not mean you don't talk about the bond election, the action you just took, it just means you informed. So for instance, if we're in this room or you're on this property and somebody starts talking to you about it, yes, we call the bond election and the amount of whatever it is, for the tax impact it will be, and Election Day is May 7. Here's what's included. You give facts. If you are acting, board members only, not Mr. Dyer, but if you are acting on your own personal behalf based on what you think is the best thing for the kids and the community on your own time and on your own dime, you can have an opinion as a board member. So you can literally cross the street from this school and say, hey, I need your support for this bond, but you can't do it on this side of the street. Okay? So we're going to go through a couple of scenarios. Board member A is at the donut shop over here with friends and family, whatever. What, at the donut shop? Is it still here?
Jason, it's Jason.
He's at the donut shop? Okay. But a friend sees Jason and says, hey, I heard the school is having a bond election, what's all that about? I don't want to pay more taxes. That's a fair statement, I assume we'll hear that. And Jason responds with, absolutely, the proposition is for renovations and additions at the elementary school and a new multipurpose competition gymnasium. This will help our kids. Is Jason okay? Or did he break any rules?
No, okay.
You're okay? Why?
Because I'm across the street.
Because you're across the street, you're on your own time and your own dime, and what that means is you are a taxpaying member of this community, so you can wear two different hats. Where you would have been wrong there is if you would have said, as a board member who's been serving this district for years, we need this. As a board member, you cannot say that, okay? So board member was not acting in the capacity of a board member, was not on a school property, was not using school funds, and was not conducting school business, who's getting donuts, can have an opinion. So here's another one. This is y'all's house. Fancy, I know. Can you have that sign in your yard as a board member?
As long as the school didn't pay for it.
As long as the school didn't pay for it, you would be in compliance if you choose to put a vote yes sign in your yard. Not that you have to do that, but that's okay. Now, another scenario. Mr. Dyer is getting some barbecue and he hears the same question and he responds in the same way. Is he out of compliance?
Yes.
Why?
Because I'm superintendent, I can't really talk about it.
But why can't you talk about it?
Because I'm advocating for it.
Yes, so Mr. Dyer is the only contract in the school district whose contract reads 24/7/365. You pay that man to sleep. So even in his dreams, he cannot have an opinion as to whether this is a good idea.
I did not know that.
Yep, you're the only, you're the only employee of the district where the contract is considered 24/7/365.
I didn't know I got paid by, well, swell.
Hey, you don't get a money.
Yes, I have friends who would make a whole lot of money. So he owns a public position paid by the school district and would be directly advocating. Does it mean he should not talk? Absolutely not. So he could have said something like this, if this ends up being the amount and the tax impact. The district has called the bond election for Saturday, May 7. The ballot is for renovations and additions at the elementary school, as well as construction of a new multipurpose competition gymnasium. Bond amounts $24 million, and the tax impact on the proposition is 17 cents. That is absolutely legal and okay because all he did was inform. Staff, teachers, officers, assistant administrators do not have a 24/7/365 contract. Your coaches, your receptionists, whatever it may be, they are more similar to a board member than they are Mr. Dyer, but they need to be very careful. So here's, here's another example. A teacher is between, and by the way, this will be given to your staff next week, but a teacher is between classes, he's at his desk in his office, between classes, catching up on some personal business on his own phone, not using a district phone, he sees his own personal Facebook and notices some negative comments, and he responds with, we need your help, vote for the Iola ISD bond. Is he okay?
No.
Why not?
Because I'm a toddler.
Okay, so there's, there's several reasons, and this one can get tricky. Likely, you won't receive a complaint, but if there's somebody out there who is steadfast against the bond, we don't want to give them reason. So there are several reasons. One, he's at his desk, it was paid for by taxpayer dollars, on, in his classroom, the building was built by taxpayer dollars. Even though he's on his personal Facebook, if he's connected to the school Wi-Fi, that is being paid monthly by taxpayer dollars. If he's charging his phone and it's plugged into your wall, electricity's being paid for by taxpayer dollars. You cannot link taxpayer dollars to advocacy. So would be out of compliance. Now, across the street or at home or out for lunch, over at the barbecue place, he can have an opinion. I would caution all of your staff during the school day, if he's sitting at Mallet Brothers and he's on his Facebook and he posts that same comment, I still would not do that because public perception could be, I know he's a teacher, and it was in the middle of the school day, I bet he advocated when he wasn't supposed to. So what we do is we just say, don't do that during school hours or at school events. So they, just like you all, when you're with your board member hat on, you should give factual information every time you have the opportunity to do so. Because the goal is, you had a facility committee that learned a lot of information and came to a conclusion. You all took action because you came to the same conclusion. So we owe it to every potential voter to provide the same amount of information to them so they can vote their heart. So we always talk to folks about the bond, we just be careful when we advocate. So here's some different do's and don'ts. Ballgame, home or away, inform. Why is that? Even if it's away.
School event.
It is a school event. Plus, an attorney might be able to argue that even if it's away, they're still at another stadium that's being paid for by taxpayer dollars. If you want to get grand, you really can say, well, the road is too that we drove there, but really, what we're worried about is the building that we're standing in, right? Meet the teacher night at school, at school's the problem, so you inform. Grandparents stay at school, inform. Can't really control what the grandparents say and do, but kind of want to steer clear of that if we can. Now, if it's a party at y'all's house, a barbecue, you can advocate all you want as long as you don't preface it with as a board member, okay? Rotary club, which I'm sure you got a lot of rotary clubs in Iowa, but Rotary Club, Chamber of Commerce, big one is church, especially in rural Texas, it would be great if anybody representing the school who goes to church can get time a couple times at their church between now and May 7 to stand up and say a few words, because if we're trying to give all the information we used to come to the conclusion to every potential voter, it's easier to do it when there's a group of people, and so that church is a good opportunity to do that. You could have a for the kids PAC rally in town. This happened not too far from here, they actually had wagon rides back and forth to voting, and had a little party at the park with hot dogs and hamburgers and sodas and whatnot. At something like that, as long as it is not here on school property, you can advocate. Again, he's the only one who cannot. So if ever in doubt, does not mean be quiet, it means just use factual information. School district should print flyers, mailers to the folks that we will have a hard time educating because they don't come to church or they don't come to town too often, but they're in the district, maybe send them the factual information so that they still get it. Maybe they're not on social media a whole lot, you can use your social media to inform those who are on it. You can spend all the money that this board or administration desires to educate your voters as long as it's informational only, and that should happen. You can write letters to the editor of papers, you can do interviews on TV and radio, all of that is highly encouraged. Just make sure that if you do it as a community member, you're doing it as a community member. If you're representing the school or the school board, you do it factually. If that makes sense. Here's another crazy thing that attorneys got in the middle of. We can't say it's an improvement to our school to build a gym or build more elementary classes, because then again, it goes back to that same old thing, it applies that you needed it to provide the education. We can't say you need it, same reason. Can't say upgrade, even though it'll be an upgrade. You can't say it's going to be better than the old gym, even though we all know it would be. You can't say it really helps, even though we know it will. All of those words on the left, imprinted material especially, are no-nos. We have to use very generic, flavorless words like address, key areas of focus, renovate, construction, additions, functionality, and facilities. So we just need to, in district information, show what the building looks like, maybe what a new building would look like, but we can't say, see, that's better. We just let people come to that conclusion themselves. Keep in mind, I don't remember what your demographics here are in the district, but you'll likely have to have a Spanish version of everything, anything you do on the website or in print. Anything that you do, we will help you put together all the informational materials you need, and we'll make sure that you get a Spanish version if it's required, but it all has to be approved by your bond council to make sure you all are on the up and up. We will be extremely transparent. If a PAC forms within your district, a PAC is a political action committee, and those are folks who are not acting in the capacity of a school representative. A teacher, a board member can be a member of one. We would recommend you to have no more than three board members be a member of one so we don't have a walk-in quorum, but if a PAC does form to tell people, you've got to support this bond and here's why, we will help set that up, set that up and manage it so that it isn't compli- we will help set that up, set that up and manage it, so that it isn't compliance and ethical and the whole nine yards. Uh, but it does have to do two things. One, if that PAC is gonna have yard signs that says vote yes, we'll have to raise some money. If they raise money and it gets to five hundred dollars or more, then it has to register with the Ethics Commission at the state level. We'll help with all that and show those folks, whoever is the PAC, what they have to do. The other key important part of this is if you start to see some signs popping up, vote no, and you can guess that they've raised five hundred dollars or more, they also have to register. And in Iola, Texas, guess where a PAC has to register? At the school. So we'll wanna, you'll know if they did or did not, and we'll wanna make sure that both sides are playing by the rules and informing the folks as however they see fit, but that they're playing by the rules. And that's it. It's not a huge, long training, but does everybody get the point? Don't, there's a gray area there, just don't. It's gonna be really hard when you're standing at a basketball game, you're up in the stands or you're at concession, and somebody's wanting to get more information about the bond. Just say, look, we're at a school event, we did call a bond, it's for this much. And you wanna come over later, you wanna get a cup of coffee, I'll tell you all about it. Then you can talk how you'd like to, off property, but just make sure to stay safe. Any way you can tie it to the school or money from the school, just inform. Questions? Good enough?
Thank you.
All right.
Let me check that. Ms. Robinson, would you hit that light, please? Thank you. Yes, sir.
All right, now, item number six, consideration of order to call for school board elections. I think that's all pretty simple and straightforward. Does anybody have any questions?
I recommend that the school board call the general election on May seventh, twenty twenty-two, for the election of school board. No motion.
On second. Those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries five O. Item, next item, ready? Consideration of approving the joint agreement for general election for local subdivisions. It's where we're joining with the county.
Yes, sir.
Not the city.
Okay.
Y'all have any questions?
No.
Okay, I moved, approve the joint agreement, general election for local subdivisions.
Second.
Yes, second, by Tammy. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries five O. Is that the last one we attended?
Yep.
We need to go to closed session of five five one oh seven four at seven oh two. All right, all in this is a motion to adjourn. And in a minute, on second, those in favor, raise your hand.
Yeah.
Motion carries five O.